Good afternoon. Welcome to our March 20 meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will call the meeting to order. Can we please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wardvado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
We will begin with a report from the city manager, including a budget update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about, on the staff side, where we see things being with our budget, since we are in an unprecedented economic and social situation in which we believe will have an unknown but significant impact on the economy. First, want to talk about expenses, and I'll talk a little bit about revenue. So as a first step in consultation with the chief financial officer and the budget director, yesterday I directed all of, all city departments to refrain from all non-essential spending and procurement at this time. I did exclude in that spending on city facility maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and computer systems that we need to deliver services to residents. Additionally, we are curbing our hiring excluding critical positions. We are monitoring the volatile stock and bond markets, the impact on our, specifically on our pension funds. It's too early to know exactly how that will, how this affects the pension funds, but we, and it won't be felt directly for six months or so, but we do anticipate, given this volatility and what's happened, higher contribution rates for our pension systems will be required in upcoming fiscal years, which, as you know, limits our ability to add services or staffing and those things. On the revenue side, city and state sales tax revenue information lags by forty-five to sixty days. So in other words, the money we were collecting in the month of March, we don't actually get information on that until early in May. So we have not seen data at this point, and it will take a little bit of time for that data to get to us. However, as we all see anecdotally, with closing of stores, department stores and other things, hotels, resorts, restaurants, bars, rental cars, retail activity, that is going to have an effect on our revenue collections. State shared income tax, which is a fairly significant portion, lags for two years. So that's one thing that will not be immediately impacted, but we'll feel the effect of whatever happens with income in a couple of years. We are also monitoring what's happening with the dedicated sales taxes that we collect for police, fire, parks, and transit, because those also are affected by the current economic conditions. Convention center revenues are track, track both the in-building sales, and we have had many cancellations there, as well as convention center revenue comes from construction activity and hotel rentals. Planning and development services revenues track construction and permitting activity, and we are working hard to safely keep our permitting and inspections on track. For the long-term health of the economy, it's important, we know, to keep the development cycle going, and we want the city to be part of that, where we are able to do that safely with our employees in plan review, design review, and permitting and inspection. The airport is, tracks revenues from rental cars, from parking, from airport, airline landing fees, and from retail restaurant activity in the airport. Each one of those categories has been significantly affected, and so we will more immediately be coming to you with information about airport revenues in the next couple of weeks and what that impacts, particularly than it has effect on the, the retail and restaurant vendors at the airport and their employment. In terms of the budget process, we had originally planned that we were going to have budget hearings out in the districts in April. We think we pretty clearly need to reconsider how it is we're going to be able to do those, try to design an online or virtual set of meetings. We'll be talking with each of you individually, as, as these meetings were held individually in your districts, and so within the next week, we'll have some alternatives for you. The hearings were not supposed to start until the week following next, so we will get the information pulled together on that. And finally, we are, we are working on establishing city hall services by appointment in order to keep vital services going, but prevent large crowds of people from gathering. We're going to be moving folks online, on the phone, or making appointments so that we can, again, keep our development counters open, but do it in a way that's safe for the public and for our employees at this time. So, Mayor, we'll continue to keep you updated on that, but that's where we, that's the status report for today.
Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. When you say critical hiring, does that include public safety? Can we continue to hire police?
At this point, we would continue to hire police and fire, and, and there are, there are other few civilian positions that we would put in a critical category as well.
Mayor.
Councilman.
So, um, do we have an extra emergency budget for our public safety when it comes to wipeys? I got a text from the president of the plea, and that they're requesting fifteen thousand wipeys a day to wipe down their vehicles and their workstations. And they're asking also for N-95 masks that they actually have to use on a daily basis also, and they're thinking that it's going to be a thousand plus a day for each officer that comes in contact with individuals. And also gloves, that they're thinking about the same amount, about a thousands or so. And then also, some of our employees that work out in, in the field, that from our trash collectors to people in the parks and all that, that are in contact with the public. Are we, are we have some type of fund that we can make sure that they all have these gloves, masks, and sanitation, wipeys to clean their workspaces, or, or the tools that they use? The nine-one-one operators and everybody, I mean, from the bus drivers. One of the things that we've been hearing from the bus drivers is that they want to make sure that they have fifty-plus people on a bus that's jam-packed in a bus, and that people are coughing and, and they're in a confined area. So are we looking at maybe protecting those workers and, all workers in the city of Phoenix, right?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, several parts to the answer to that. First, our issue at this point for protective equipment would not be funding, it would be availability. So our chief financial officer and her staff are out there scouring all available avenues to get what you mentioned, the masks, the gloves, the wipes, the sanitizer. Their, their issue has not been that we don't have the money for them. Their issue has been finding someone who has a supply able to sell to us. They are still able to get some of that, and they're working on that. In many cases, the delivery time is delayed. So, and at this point, I don't worry about the funding for that, because we do have sufficient contingencies and other things to do that. The other thing that I would just say about that is, because this is such an unprecedented situation, what we had planned for in terms of emergency stores and caches of those things are going quicker than, than had been estimated. So currently, we're working internally to even out. We don't want one department having a big supply room full of something while another department doesn't have enough. So the procurement folks are also, and the department heads are leveling out the supplies across the departments, and then prioritizing them to particularly the highest-risk responders, such as our paramedics, making sure that they have those. So we're continuing to monitor that on a, on a daily, daily basis because of the nature of this virus.
And one other concern I'm hearing from our employees is that it's great to have daycare and opening up some of our rec centers for our children, but is that safe? And I'm telling them, I really don't know. I need to get some expert opinion about putting all of our children and some closed-in areas. So maybe we can have a report later on.
Yes.
When you have time to talk about.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, to, as you mentioned, we are starting Monday, on a limited basis, opening with our city employees, staffing at some of our recreation centers to provide childcare for our city employees who still have to report to their work site, particularly to focus on our nine-one-one operators, police, fire, solid waste. But it's open to all city employees. It is, as you mentioned, it is a difficult trade-off for people to know how to navigate between caring for your children in a, in a, in the ultimate safe environment, which is your home, with what your responsibility and work is. We wanted to offer it as an option for parents. Parks and Recreation is working closely with HR safety to make sure they have all the protocols in place for continually wiping, cleaning, and doing those things. But ultimately, we will leave that judgment to the parents for their comfort with doing that. But we wanted to provide it as an alternative for parents who need to come and be the nine-one-one operator or the, or the aviation curbside assistant as an alternative.
Well, thank you so much.
It is a difficult choice.
It's all about, all of us want to save lives, so that's what it's all about.
Councilman DeCecio.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So just to follow up to on what Councilman Nowakowski had mentioned about, because we heard the same thing with the, and I know you're following up with the police end. We asked that question as well. But the bus drivers, we've been hearing as well, that they're very concerned, because they sort of didn't hear that answer on that, unless you're, you know, were already planning on doing something on that, Ed. The bus drivers are concerned that people are coughing on the bus, they're, you know, they're approaching them. They were looking at trying to find a way to shield themselves off somehow, even on a temporary basis, or at least getting some masks or something. I mean, I think that would be a fair request on their end. How do we handle that from our end? I mean, we know that they're from another end company, but at the same time, we do bear some level of responsibility to make sure that they're taken care of.
Thank you, Councilman, Mayor, Councilman DeCecio. So we have a unique relationship with the bus operators, as you mentioned, because their employer is Transdev or First Transit or MV Transportation. And so those employers are respond, really responsible for the protective equipment. But there is a role particularly for the city for that in, 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 how many people can be on a bus? We would have authority to limit that. We would also, there's also been a request about closing the front door and having people enter through the back door of buses to keep more separation from the operators. The effect of that, though, would be that we would stop collecting fares, and that needs, that is something that is a bigger decision than staff can just make, that we're going to stop collecting fares on buses. So that would be something we would have to consider in that regard as the city, as the holder of the contract. But, but our, our staff is in, in contact with both the union and the operators, who we have a contractual relationship, and trying to work out arrangements so that people are comfortable and safe in that.
Well, and then also to keep in mind that when people do get on the bus, whether it's at the front door, the back door, or the middle door, I guess, the, there is, they do congregate very tightly, because they're trying to all get on at that point. So, I mean, that's the other thing I think we ought to be looking at.
Right.
But from my perspective, if we can at least afford to take care of some of the drivers, not some, but take care of the drivers there with either a mask or something like that, I think that would be helpful. In regards, the second question I've got deals with the pension, and not to get too technical on it, but I think you'll know where I'm going on it. It takes about forty-five days, I see Jeff here, about forty-five days to be able to get at least some sort of estimate of where we're going to be tracking, correct?
That's right.
With the sales tax.
Sales tax collections, for example, for March, Jeff will start receiving that data in early May. So.
March, oh, that's true.
We won't see what happened in March fully in terms of data from the state who collects the revenue for us until early May.
Okay, so it's about forty-five days.
Yes.
And then that represents about forty-two percent of our budget, forty, forty-two, forty-five percent, whatever that percentage is. That'll give us an idea on that end. But we can also be, we should be able to track the other revenue sources that we're getting in, because I don't know how much of an impact it's had on property, which is what, eleven percent, or whatever that percentage is. But we should be able to track the other revenues that are coming in, and at least give us an idea on that.
Yes.
Maybe, you know, not the next time, maybe you've got enough on your plate right now, Ed, but at least give us a perspective on the additional, you know, fifty-four, fifty-five percent that's out there, where we're at with that. The other one deals, the other question I got in the last one, I'm not going to take a lot of time on it because I'm concerned about it. So the last two years were the first times we ever hit our rate of return on the pension returns, two out of ten, okay? We were, I think, eleven percent one year, and then thirteen another. The other times, we're well below the projected seven-point-four percent that we expect to have in our pensions, make them full, or basically whole. So, given what's occurring here, and I'd like to have Jeff, if he could, just give us, and there's no way you're going to be able to make that determination right away, but at least give us multiple scenarios of where we're at, you know, like a worst case and a best case. And I think they can model these things at different levels of return, based on, you know, last year's and the year before. And I'd like us to go back ten years, but that's not going to work, because, you know, this is a crisis situation, and you got to look at what you think you're going to get. So the twenty-nine million dollars that we have already, you know, put away may be eaten up and just, may have already been eaten up, just on these extra pension costs. Not so, well, yeah, so much of the employee cost, but the, the police and fire fund, which was already severely underfunded. Where are we going to be with that one? You know, that is the one that I think we should be looking at. And Jeff, if you don't mind, doing some modeling, because I know we have that new system in place that allows us to model. And I'll lay odds knowing Jeff, he's probably already done that.
Yeah, I was going to say, Jeff and Denise are way ahead of me and you on that one. They are starting their modeling.
Yeah.
Discussion. I'd just also say, what's important about the, the state of the market in terms of, of the pension funds right now is really, where is the market on June 30th, 2020? All this stuff in between, but the, but the funds get marked on a yearly basis as of the close of the market on June 30th of the year. So what we need is for it to recover. But, but we will model, based on what we see now, we will model different effects.
Yeah, because what'll end up happening, it's an anomaly time right now, though, too, right? So because of that, you're going to be modeling, just if we could have multiple, you know, multiple examples, if that doesn't matter, I mean, if that doesn't, if, if that's okay. Because, you know, we've got to have some hope and faith that this economy is going to recover. And I said I only had one more question, but I do have one more. Dealing with the airport, with the revenues that are in there, because landing fees are obviously not happening as much. I know the planes are still trying to fly, you know.
Fewer flights, fewer passengers.
Yeah.
Fewer people coming and going means less parking, less stores, less restaurants, less landing fees.
Right, less everything, right? So as you do your budget, and for that, I would like to see what the major expenses are there. I know the, the train system is X. I would like to have that separated for sure. But what the major expenses are, and what the, the major revenues are coming in there. Make it a, you know, it doesn't have to be complicated, at least from my end. I'd like to see it on one sheet of paper, just like, here are five major revenue streams, and here are five major expenses, and the amount of monies that they were. And you can model it off of what occurred last year. It doesn't have to be right now in real time, because you're not going to be able to recover that in real time. But then at least it gives us a chance to be able to say, hey, look, here's where we're at. And it'll give us an idea and an expectation of what we're going to be able to see going forward, too.
Yes.
So I'd like to see what the last year's model were, was, and then moving forward, what the expectation is on those, you know, five, whatever the numbers you want to put up there, Ed.
I'm not speci, I'm not sure specifically what Mr. Bennett has, but I know he and his staff have been working this week on.
Yeah.
That sort of forecasting and modeling. So we will bring that to the council.
That's going to be a big deal.
As well.
So we, at least we could see that. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to also clarify, Mayor, back to one question from Councilman Nowakowski. I didn't say it fully. In terms of the childcare, the childcare, or the, I'm sorry, day camp. We're doing day camp for city, school-aged children of city employees who are working. That, that will follow the guidelines, where there will be no more than ten children and adults in any facility. I, I should have said that. I, not in, in any space. So we might have a big space with rooms, but we will not put more than ten people into, into a day camp setting as we go through. And then also, Chief Williams let me know on the question of supplies, that they are working through their incident management team to get the supplies and distribute them to first, to the first responders as their priority.
Is there a way to get an email out to, to our employees stating that, that we're going to be following the?
We'll ask, yes, we'll ask the chiefs to make sure that, that's being said to their employees. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor, may I ask you questions?
Sure. Councilman Waring, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Pastor.
Okay, I didn't mean to, if she wants to go first, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The floor is yours, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. Ed Sal touched on a question that I had about, that we've talked about the twenty-eight million. Obviously, Jeff's last budget presentation, uh, was just a couple of weeks ago, was a lot different picture than what we're looking at now. You and I have talked offline about, you know, where are we going to be for this fiscal year? It ends June 30th. Obviously, if you count this as, are starting, you know, maybe March 1st, you're talking about a third of the year. That's a lot of revenue. Obviously, you've mentioned, you know, we're always, you know, weeks, months behind, month and a half behind. You and I have talked about how much of that twenty-eight million that we're supposed to have as a surplus, which as Sal indicated, might be shrinking pretty appreciably. But, but I think you had told me, I can't remember if it was twelve or fourteen million, was kind of committed. Obviously, we've made some commitments recently, or, or the council as a whole, not necessarily me personally. Councilman Nowakowski and I think also Sal, both of them had mentioned about, you know, masks and sanitary stuff for police officers, bus drivers. That is an excellent point. I would argue those trump any other types of expenses that we have, or people just aren't going to come to work. And if they get sick, they can't come to work. That's not really fair to them. So is there a process for us to reevaluate the current budget year, the distribution of resources, to tap in what we thought might have been the overage, to the extent it's already been collected, to, to do some emergency things right now? We may look at that list again and say, you know, we thought that was a real priority, but right now, we have other priorities, life-saving priorities, right now, today. Is there a way to do that? And are you confident that if this situation continues for the length of time that people seem to be indicating from both the federal and the state governments they expect it to, are we going to have enough money to cover all of our expenses in this fiscal year? Irrespective of the fact that next fiscal year, we're going to have labor negotiations and so forth, and people had committed money for, for more expenses than we had this, this current year? I don't know, maybe those aren't fair questions for right now, but how are we going to address that? Is it possible to readjust on the fly right now for this year?
So Mayor, Councilman Waring, the city, in the last ten years, I think twice, we have done mid-year adjustments when necessary. At this point, it's too early to know whether that is necessary. But to, to simply answer your question, yes, it is possible for the council to readjust the budget in, in the middle of the year. You mentioned the twenty-eight million, which was a projected surplus for next year. So that is, that is something for going forward. The, the reason to stop the non-essential spending and the non, non-critical hiring now is to continue to preserve resources this year to be able to cover our obligations this year. We, we, none of us have been in a situation like this before, so we don't know what the economic impact is going to be, and for how long it's going to be. So I wouldn't speculate right now to say that we do or don't have money for this fiscal year. As of this moment, we are, we are paying our bills, and we are, are doing okay with that. We'll just have to monitor that really on a weekly basis, and we'll have a better sense of that when we get our March sales tax collections in. But we, this is something that we will continually monitor and communicate with the council and the community about. And finally, I think one of your first questions was about the council's commitment to spending things. The council is, has taken policy positions to add certain things to be done next year, but the commitment to spend the money will come with whatever budget is adopted for the year starting July 1. So that will be a part of the budget discussion, will be how and how much, and whether to fund specific activities that begin on July 1.
Um, I think.
Okay, so it is possible.
That's okay, no, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were updone, Councilman.
Okay, yeah. So it's, so it's possible to undo decisions that already been made before that money is committed. But, but the decisions that have been made for this year are sort of etched in stone unless we don't have the cash to pay. But the decisions made for starting July 1st, that is not necessarily etched in stone. Those, those decisions will be made through the budget process and can be changed. I might argue should be changed in many cases, but, but we do have an opportunity to do that. And, you know, that money can be redirected towards safety measures as needed, or childcare, or the other things that have been mentioned. Is that a fair analysis?
Councilman, that is correct. I'll give you an example. A couple of weeks ago, the council adopted an international trade strategy that set, that set a policy direction, which would have involved hiring two new staff next year for international trade. That was a direction to put that into next year's budget, but it was not an obligation for us to hire those folks or add that to the budget yet. So as we examine next year's budget, we'll take that into account and have that discussion as to whether there are, there are sufficient funds for that or not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Uh, you had said that you would still be hiring essential staff. What is essential staff? I understand a fire and police, but what is considered essential staff on the civilian side?
We don't have an exact, clear definition of that at the moment, because we, we're just starting that. But we generally look at the health and wealth, health and safety sorts of issues. So police and fire, nine-one-one operators, if we're unable to pick up the trash, those sorts of things. There are some, in some cases, like financial expertise that we need in order to be able to, we have a position that's particularly important with financial expertise. We, we can't have that go vacant. So we're assessing those really on a, on a request basis by the department heads.
So when you say go vacant, what I mean is, I'm hearing that, are, is there someone already in that position? Because what, what I heard was hiring, we would continue hiring essential staff.
So for example, we may have had a position that's been vacant since December, and we were in a hiring process for it, or we haven't started a process yet, but we want to start. If that is a critical position, we would go ahead and hire for that position that is currently vacant.
Okay. Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to pony up on what Jim Waring was talking about, even though, and I just want to make sure we're really clear, because for those of us that were here in 2010, it was a very difficult time. So anything that's in the budget that's, even that we've already budgeted from last year is something that five of us here on, on the council can make that determination. So not even the ones that are coming up in June, we can readjust at any point at any time, remembering what happened in 2010.
I would just, I'd say, Jeff speaking, yes, assuming we're in compliance with contract laws. But, but you're, you're generally, that's correct.
But even those in contracts, a lot of our contracts, if I remember correctly, and, you know, because we went through all these, have an out clause in there to where it says, hey, if certain situations occur, the council can pull back on some of these contracts. So like, we may have a long-term contract to buy paper, for example. Those are generally, within thirty days, we have a right to pull back. I'm just giving a thought here. So I don't think we've hit that point yet, but it's something that we ought to be planning, what Jim was talking about, because if you look at it, some of these that are in long-term contracts that we may or may not need, we can do a readjustment there, too.
Councilman, thank you. That, that's a great point that I didn't mention. Our chief financial officer is, is going through our procurements and, and our contracts to see where, you know, we might have capacity that we haven't used yet, and starting to pull that down in those cases. That's to your point exactly. But, but that's going to be an ongoing dialogue we'll have with the council. But I just, I want to assure you that the, the staff is already this week getting into that.
We didn't even talk ahead of time.
It's important to know.
About that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional councilmember comments or questions? Vice Mayor.
So when it comes, we, I mean, I think we all understand that we're under, you know, very extreme circumstances. Is there a way where we can implement something when it, especially with our, with our city employees? Because I know at some point, you know, maybe layoffs are going to occur, making sure that, you know, that once we can rehire people back or bring people back, making sure that they get first preference on, on coming back to work for the city or in any of our facilities that we have, that we have control over that? Maybe something as, as far as worker retention?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, so the, I don't even want to speculate that we're getting towards that, that word that you used. And that's why all this pulling back on spending that's not essential and hiring that's not essential is designed to save as much money as we can, so we don't have to take further steps. But if we ever get to that point, and as Councilman DeCecio mentioned, we did get to that point in 2009, there are very clear rules that involve rights for employees, that involve recall rights as well. So those are spelled out in our labor agreements and in our personnel rules as to how. how people's rights fall in terms of seniority, placement, opportunity, and if we ever get to that point, return. But I just want to be clear, at this point, we, we are not talking about or considering that.
Right, well, let's hope so. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stark.
Just as a follow-up to that, you would probably try to implement burlough days before you lay anyone off, like we did in 2010, because I took a few of them.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, you probably do remember that. You had to both take them and administer them. Uh, generally, for all but middle managers and executives, those are thing, those would be things that would have to be agreed upon with our labor groups. They are negotiated items. Uh, for those who, uh, the city manager is their negotiator, which would be executives and middle managers, those can be implemented without that sort of negotiation, but, but, but that sort of thing is done only upon mutual agreement with labor groups.
Thank you. Any additional council member questions or comments? Thank you, City Manager, for that presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one. Councilwoman Pastor.
I just have a question, because we're talking about, um, our employees. Uh, my question is, uh, working from home. Um, I've been hearing that, uh, from working from home, that some people have to have take, or are starting to take some of their leave in order to work from home. I'm not really sure, I'm confused with what, that, what was being said to me, uh, because at, uh, the community colleges and at the schools, uh, we are all working from home, and if, say I get sick, then I'll take my sick day, and that wouldn't be considered working from home. So how is that, how is that being articulated or being administered?
So not knowing what, what you're being told, no one should be working from home and having to take leave. If you are working from home, you are working, and there's no leave necessary. If you are not, if you are just home, not doing your job, and I'll just use the most obvious example, a garbage truck driver cannot work from home. So if a garbage truck driver is at home, they have to be using leave of some kind. Uh, a more administrative job may be something that can be done from home, and if that's being done from home, they're working during their eight or 10-hour shift from home, they do not have to use leave.
Okay, because like at the, at the schools or school districts, they have bus drivers, so I'm going to use them as, uh, um, and there are no kids, so that, you know, they don't need bus pickup. However, the school is retooling or relooking at their scope of work right now, or what their job scope is, and redoing their job scope so that they're able to work. So like a garbage, uh, pickup driver, what can we do then to assist without them taking time, um, and find a different area possibly of them being able to do some work?
Yeah, thank, thank you. So since we're less than a week into this, so we don't have all those answers worked out, but that is the kind of question, as we move forward, and this goes longer, that we're working through. First, we're trying to identify, are there ways, places that we can shift people? They were in this job over here, where that's not functioning, but they could do this thing over here. I think that's what you're referring to. We want to try to find those opportunities wherever we can, because our commitment is, we don't want our employees to miss a paycheck. So we're trying to work through their leave banks, through even ability to borrow leave if necessary, if people are actually infected with COVID-19, that we are taking care of that, and then finding opportunities for them to continue to work so they can continue to be paid. But the details on that are, we're, we're working through those every day, and those will be the kinds of things I think we would continue to update the council on as we move forward.
And if any federal law were to pass that, for example, changed leave policies, we would absolutely follow that?
Yes, we are monitoring that closely. That's, that would be very important for us. Um, we have good leave policies at the city, and this is a situation where the reason for our leave exists, but with federal law adjusts how we need to do that, we will absolutely comply with federal law.
And it looks like there's, I think-
There are things coming from the feds that we've seen, yes.
The Vice Mayor has very eloquently pointed out, though, that this crisis illustrates why sick leave is so valuable.
Right.
Um, any additional council member comments? Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
Yes, I have a motion to enter into executive session.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will reconvene in executive session. Good afternoon. Welcome to the, back to the Friday, March 20th, special meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We will reconvene and call the group to order. We are going to jointly hear items one and two. Uh, we have received significant public comments. I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager and his team to, uh, share what the public has said.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received significant public comment. I would like to have our City Manager's Office Assistant Jenny Hackelman. She will summarize the number of our, the number of comments and the categories that came in.
Mayor and City Council members, we received 364 comments on today's agenda. 218 of the comments agreed with the mayor and city council's declaration of an emergency, and 15 of the comments disagreed. 90 of the comments addressed restaurant and bar closures. Nine of the comments did not support item number one, the declaration of great emergency, and we received 32 additional comments on topics such as senior center closures and small business assistance.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the public for making sure that your voices were, were heard. Councilwoman, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. I move to approve item one, declaring an emergency due to the COVID-19, per the proclamation of the mayor on March 17, 2020.
Second. Vice Mayor.
And I have a secondary motion, a substitute motion. Because of the statewide decision on bars and restaurants, the council is declaring a local emergency. This section preserved the right of the mayor to declare a great emergency in the future, so should circumstances warranted.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, council comments. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to go along with the substitute motion, but I, I want to make sure, I want everyone to make, I can't talk, I'm sorry, we've been in e-session too long. I want to make sure that it's known that we support you. We are in a crisis, and we know you'll do the right thing, and I think, um, we're going to show you all the support we can, so we can get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I also, when it, when I say, I think there have been a lot of different narratives put out there, but I want to assure all of our residents that this council is ready to work together at this crucial time. I want to thank our mayor for her leadership and our entire council for the work they are all putting in. And I just want to assure everyone that I believe that we are still at an emergency, and we need to take all the precautions necessary when it comes to, if you can stay home, please stay home. If anything that you can do to help us flatten the bed, all of that is going to be greatly appreciated, because we, this is just the beginning, and we understand that circumstances can get worse.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make it clear that I fully believe you are the mayor. You are the point person for this city, and I respect the job you're doing. I also want to say, I know that this entire council, uh, is supporting you, and that we are standing ready to help you in any way we can, whether it's hands-on, advice, et cetera. Uh, we are in a crisis, we recognize that, it's not over, but working together, we can be successful. City of Phoenix always is.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Similar to my colleagues, I want to recognize that we are in an emergency and, and dealing with something that we've never dealt with before. Um, we have the trust in the mayor that if circumstances are needed, the mayor will move forward, um, and, and take leadership. Uh, we will also like to work together and make sure that all of us are taking care of the most vulnerable people, of the people in our districts. Also want to take the opportunity to thank the staff. City Attorney, I think, has been working non-stop, City Manager, and everyone in the city who, from folks in the parks and the water department who are having to deal with this, and maybe we haven't been able to get you the equipment that you've needed. We will try to move swiftly and try to take care of both our constituents, our businesses, and our employees at the city. So thank you all so much for your patience.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor, I'd like to thank you for what you have done and how you brought the whole council together. Uh, you have demonstrated great leadership. We are a united front. We are in emergency. We all understand that. It's how we move forward collectively and together. Really appreciate, uh, the fact that you will use our knowledge and all our, uh, uh, I don't, knowledge, uh, that we represent in every different facets, and be able to put us to work in a way that every one of us understands how we can move this city forward, but not only forward to protect our citizens. It's very important that we stay home, and we practice the social distancing, and that we need to curb this. And the only way, you have the knowledge and you have, uh, the information that you have provided to us to do that, and we are proud of you, and we accept your leadership. Thank you.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everyone here that we are definitely in a crisis. Uh, we have not left it, and it's extremely important that the public understand that we need to all work together. Um, the council, everybody does. And we fully affirm your support, uh, your leadership here, Mayor. Uh, you are the mayor of the City of Phoenix. Uh, we are fully behind you on this, and we know that we will get things done by working together. The public expects that, but at the very least, the public sees that we are working together, and it is critical. And that is what true leadership is, and that is what we're seeing today. We're seeing the, uh, your, your leadership of the city. We are seeing how effective you are at getting things done, and I'm very appreciative for everything you've done to try to keep things safe in the city, and that you, everything you've said and done has been about trying to protect the City of Phoenix and the citizens, and that goes a long ways with the public, and it's critical that the public see this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, I, I believe a true leader is a person that brings people together and finds that common ground, and, and that's what you did today, is that you brought us all together, and we voiced all of our different opinions. And all the opinions were basically a common thread of keeping our communities, our city, and most important, our families out there safe. We're all parents. I have five, five boys and one girl. And just on a personal note, my son was born in 2001, and that was during, um, 9/11. And my wife and I were expecting our first child, my wife Delia and I, and as we turned on that television, we was just seeing the towers going down, and just that, that our country was like at war. And I know that feeling, and for a couple of weeks after that, how, how the news just kept on talking about what can happen in this great country of ours. But one of the things that happened afterwards, and that's what we're known for in Phoenix with your leadership, is that we come together. We come together as a community, we come together as restaurant owners, as business owners, and we help each other out. And that's one of the things that we've talked about, is how do we use all these volunteers, and how do we use all these resources to make things happen? So once again, I want to thank you for, for your leadership in bringing this all together to make things happen.
Thank you. Thank you to the-
Oh, Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Waring.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I know it's been a very hard few days for you and for all of us, and will continue to be. Uh, this is a, this is a terrible time for our country and, and really the world, if you look at it. Uh, the things people are being forced to do are things that nobody would have contemplated two weeks ago. Canceling of the NCAA tournament, the Vegas casinos closed, beaches closed in Florida, you know, New York City basically shut down. You could go on and on. Nobody would be doing that if people around the world didn't, around the country and around the world, didn't recognize what a serious crisis this is. I appreciate you addressing it, uh, very much appreciate Governor Ducey, um, and his actions, uh, yesterday. Uh, we, we will have to face this together as a community. Um, you know, frankly, uh, for the last few days, you and I don't always agree on everything. I think that's, uh, you know, well-known, but, but I think, um, I, I know that you are acting in your capacity in the most responsible manner you could, and I want to be supportive. Uh, we have worked together a lot the last couple of days, and, uh, I appreciate that it's achieved, uh, the right results, and I think it's the best result for our citizens now and going forward. We have more of a state framework of what should be done, but, but very much appreciate, um, your role in this. And, um, you know, I'm going to vote yes, and I, I think, whether you call it local or great, everybody realizes what a crisis this is, and that moving forward, we're taking this day by day. Uh, and I just want to say, I appreciate working with you on this, and obviously, it's not over, and I know we will move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to thank the members of the Phoenix City Council for coming together in this time of a great crisis. COVID-19 is 19 ti, I'm sorry, COVID-19 is 10 times more deadly than the flu. We are at the beginning of a crisis, and we are going to have to work together. I am going to need the help of every elected official in the City of Phoenix. Everyone here brings unique expertise, and we are going to need all of it to get through this difficult time that is in front of us as a city and as a country. This really is the first crisis that hits all 50 states in the United States. We very likely will see fatality in all 50 states. We've not faced anything like this as a nation, and we are going to have to work together across every boundary, whether it be demographics, levels of government. But this city council is committed to working together to make sure that we do what we can to reduce the spread. Many people call it flatten the curve. We want to support our medical professionals and give them the tools to have the best odds possible. We also know that every member of our community is hurting right now, and they need leadership from us as elected officials. We are committed to working together to do what we can to support our community, and we want to thank everyone who stepped up. Our city employees have been amazing. People have been ta, asked to take on new duties. There is great uncertainty for everyone. We have our work cut out together, but I believe the Phoenix City Council is up for it. And with that, I will turn to roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Callejo. Yes. This motion passes unanimously. With that, this meeting of the Phoenix City Council is adjourned.